It's the appointed time to start the meeting today. I will call the meeting to order. All commission members are present, a forum is established. Before we have the invocation by Mr. Turman, I'd like us to remember three former associates of ours, Mr. Johnny McWee, Mr. David Hicks, and Heath Kelly, that we have lost, and we lost them all within one week. So, Mr. Turman, will you say the invocation?
Sure. Glad to. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, with a humble heart this morning, thanking you and praising you for this time that you've given us to be together. And we're thanking you, Lord, for your blessings and your grace and strength. We ask you, God, to continue to move on the families that have lost their loved ones. God, the county has suffered a great loss in three people in the last few weeks. And we're just asking you to bless and touch and strengthen. And I pray, God, that you'd continue to help us to be leaders in the men and women that we should be, and to be examples and to lead by examples. I pray, God, that you bless this commission, help us as we take care of the county business this morning, give us the right direction to be in, and I pray that you would just touch and help every one of us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Would you join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a further comment about the prayer. We're one of the few bodies that open their meetings with prayer. This week, the Supreme Court ruled that we are not in violation of separation of church and state. That was good news to hear. And so, we will continue. And we thought we was right all along anyway, Mr. Albrecht. So, with that, I want to welcome everybody here this morning, and welcome the news media, and we appreciate the help they give us in informing the public. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the official agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second, Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll have comments from our public officials. I see Mr. Dennis Meeks is here. I'll let him speak, if he'll be brief.
I'll be pretty doggone brief. Last month, I presented some years of service plaques to some individuals. Ms. Rachel Edding, she was out of the country visiting her daughter, so I called her up at this time. And Rachel has been with the sheriff's office for twenty years. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's all the related officials. At this time, we're going to take comments from the citizens, and Mr. David Tisdale, representing the Alabama Junior Rodeo Association, would like to address the commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Most of you know me, my name's David Tisdale. I was a resident of Covenant County for a little over forty-five years. My wife and I moved to Baymanette to further her career as a prosecutor for the state. But yet, we still call Andalusia home. I'm here representing the Alabama Junior Rodeo Association, which is a junior rodeo association for the kindergarten through the eighth grade. We want to bring the state finals to Andalusia, which is our hometown. We want to show them what a nice facility we have. We want to show them what good hometown folks are. And what I'm asking for today is help with paying for the facility. The facility rental is going to cost us three thousand dollars to rent the facility, and that's just for the arena rental. I have spoken with the city. The city has agreed to match the funds up to fifteen hundred dollars. With the three thousand dollars combined, that would pay for our arena rental for the week we'll be here from June the... Our Queens contestants start coming in on June the fourth. We'll rodeo June the fifth, the sixth, and the seventh, and we'll leave out on the eighth. During that time, we'll have somewhere in the neighborhood around three hundred people here during that week, and as you know, that they'll be eating, they'll be sleeping, they'll be going to the convenience stores, grocery stores, and putting tax dollars back into our city. Just a side note that when my daughter fills out her paperwork for this rodeos that she still puts her hometown as Andalusia, Alabama, she won't change it, because that's where she's from. And hopefully someday, we'll be able to move back here. But in the meantime, I'd love to bring as many people to this place as I can. And with your help, I know I can bring about three hundred here to see what our city's about. You know, this association has started back in nineteen ninety-seven, and it's grown through the years, and it has been able to sustain itself through the years, and just like any other group or organization, it does have to seek outside funding at times, depending on where they go and the facility they choose. And right now, I'm going to choose the best the state has to offer, and I need help. So...
Thank you, sir.
Any questions from anybody? We'll address this down in the new business.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pitt.
Yes, sir.
On to agenda number two. We got somebody else to address us?
The declaration?
No.
It's just opening.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, no, no one else, I'm sorry.
Andalusia Classics and Street Rods?
Yeah, did you take that off?
Well, no, that is, I'm sorry, that's on here. I just didn't have you listed as a speaker, but wishes of the...
I'm going to let him speak at this time. Let you address the commission, please.
I'm Roddy Kilgore, president of Andalusia Classics and Street Rods. We started a local car club here in the year two thousand with fifteen members. We've now got forty-eight members. Our goal was to help the senior citizens and the children in Covenant County with our profit. So far, we have two car shows a year. And February is dedicated to the children's, or the Christian Service Center with the food bank. Last year, we made up over seven hundred and twenty pounds of food for the food bank plus a hundred and fifty dollars cash. And we've also donated our profit from our car club to the Covenant County Red Cross Food Wagon, Meredith's Miracles, and the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This year, we're going to do a two-year calendar, two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen calendar. When you see a calendar with muscle cars on it, it's just a car with in the background, you know, nothing there. This year, we're going to try to do, well, no, we're going to do, we're going to do it. And we'd like to have y'all's help, if you could pass those around. That's just a sample of some of the photos that we're going to have on our calendar. At the bottom of our calendar, we're going to have a tear-off coupon. And we're selling ads to the local merchants on that. The people that buy a calendar will get a tear-off coupon, bring it to their local business, and they'll have a drawing sometime during that month. And we've already sold twenty ads for the twenty-four month calendar. So, that's pretty good. So, this, the pictures feature historic or unique places around Andalusia and Covenant County. And this is the first time we've ever asked for any monetary assistance. We, you know, on our car shows, we make just enough to cover the event and have some entertainment. We have people coming in from all over South Alabama, Northwest Florida, parts of Mississippi and Georgia. And so, we just like you to consider helping us out on that venture this year. I think that would bring a lot of folks back during the year, all twenty-four months, to bring those coupons back to Andalusia and put in drawings. And I think that'd be a benefit to all the county. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much. This time, we have no old business. One item that went out on the original agenda has been taken off at the request of the people that's involved. So, we will not be discussing rails to trails this morning. That, we will move into new business. First item of business is consider approval of April ninth, two thousand fourteen regular meeting, and April eighteenth, two thousand fourteen special meeting minutes. I have read the minutes, they look fine to me. Do I have a motion that we approve them?
So move them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Barton, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. As you know, we had a disaster, so to speak, with flooding on April the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. In order to be qualified for potential funding, we need to declare a, make a declaration of disaster. Ms. Harris, do you wish to address this?
We have two different sides of the FEMA that we're applying for, which is the IA, the individual assistance. We did have some structures in Covenant County that were damaged with this disaster that came through. We had two house fires, one house with moderate damage and one with minor damage. Those houses are not eligible for the FEMA assistance because we didn't reach that threshold. We're trying to assist them in other ways. But with the public assistance, the roads, this is what the declaration is needed for, because we do reach that threshold. It's a dollar figure on that, which is a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and they're way past that with their damage assessment. So, this is needed just so that if we do receive the declaration, that we're able to get that FEMA funds.
Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion that we adopt this proclamation of assistance for local emergency?
I'll make a vote.
Second, Chairman.
Mr. Norley, Mr. Elmore, second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. The next item is consider the bids for the solid waste collection disposal service. Ms. Pitt, I would like for you to explain what happened.
Okay, I'll explain what happened. We solicited bids from all the vendors that we had access to find. We only had one bidder, and that was our local provider for the last twenty-something years. Mr. Cassidy, would you like to speak to this? Your page two in your packet gives the results of his, the bid he submitted. It's the first time this contract has been bid in twenty-two years.
Good morning, First Chairman and Commissioners. You know, it hurt my heart to tell you all we could not renew the contract under the existing terms after servicing the citizens for twenty-two years. We responded to the competitive proposal at five minutes to two. When I found out we're the only proposer, I asked Ms. Pitt if I could go get the other proposal out of my truck and bring that one in, and she said absolutely not. But, you know, we appreciate your consideration and look forward to another twenty-two years of servicing Covington County. Our attorney is working with your attorney for the final draft. There's no material changes to it, just cleaning up some of the verbiage in it. And we ask that you approve the contract pending final legal approval.
And I'll say, it's not sitting on my desk. It's sitting on her desk.
That's correct. And it's unfortunate, my mom was buried Friday, so I was tied up last week, and then we had the storm, so I don't want to blame our attorney. I will take full blame for not responding to her in a timely manner.
We perfectly understand that at times, and we're sorry for your loss. You see, the final layer is going to be fifty-nine point one-three rate per quarter for one cart. And this is the only bid we have. We can either accept it or reject it. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
I want to accept it, and for the main reason, it's not going up hardly any. And we already set up all of our carts, everything's in place, and nothing will change, it'll just continue as it's been going. And I think we've had real good service, and I just think we need to adopt it.
Chairman, if I could, not to interrupt the motion, but almost three dollars of that goes to code enforcement to help enforce the mandatory garbage so that the four hundred and eight people that get social security exemptions continue to get the social security exemptions.
Do I have a motion that we accept this bid pending review by our attorney for final approval?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman.
We look forward to being in business with you.
Yes, sir, well, you know, we employ...
We want you to do it well enough that we don't, we do not receive one call in a month.
Well, you know, when we get the rain, there are going to be some calls, and, you know, but we have a contingency plan where we notify Ms. Pitt. That way, when somebody calls, they know that their road is going to be serviced on the next available dry day. We don't want to damage the roads. As you know, we employ several people here that make well more than minimum wage, and we're proud to be part of the community.
Thank you for not wanting to damage the road. Always him loggered felt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you.
Next item is consider board appointments to the Covenant County E nine-one one board. We have two positions. The current appointees are asking for reappointment. There's a letter from the director recommending they be reappointed, and this is Mr. Cody Ward and Sonny Bledsoe. Mr. Bledsoe is from the Floella area, and Mr. Ward is from the Andalusia area.
Those are reappointments, we're going to have two open appointments, is that not correct?
There are three, three appointments. Two only asking for be reappointed, and then we'll have one that the person is not coming back.
Well, I had heard that Mr. Bledsoe withdrew his application. Or had he? Somebody told me this last night, or this, that he was, I didn't know if he might have contacted you at the last minute.
I have not heard from him.
Somebody told me that he was, I didn't know that.
At one time, he was considered, the misstimes had told me he was considered, but then he reconsidered and said he, because they needed somebody from the Floella area to be on the board.
Your documents there contain all the applications that we received.
If I understand it correctly, at this time, we're just doing reappointments?
Well, that's what I brought up.
Yeah, there's no, there's nobody that's, in other words, there's no open space?
Well, it depends on what you want to do. I'm just stating that they asked to be reappointed, and the director recommended they be reappointed. If you do not want to take her recommendation, then you'll need to take some other kind of action.
At this time, Chairman, I make a recommendation we reappoint Sonny Bledsoe and Mr. Spurley.
Mr. Spurley is not up for a reappointment. That is a vacancy, we'll take it up in a separate...
Okay.
Well, that's, I think that's what he was asking earlier.
That's his name, was that name?
Technically, if I may, Mr. Albretton, straighten me out if I'm wrong. Right now, these terms, all three expire. In other words, you're about to have three vacancies. It's your choice to reappoint or put someone new. So, I mean, they all really stand alike. Mr. Williams, the one that basically represented op, did not ask to be reappointed. These other two did. But they're all vacant, they're all about to be vacancies. That you could put these back in, or, you know, new ones?
He'd be representing op, and Mr. Bledsoe would be representing Floella. So, I've seen Mr. Thomas Hughes here then.
Thomas Huggins.
Huggins, I mean, I'm sorry, Thomas Huggins. Can I retract that motion in, at this time?
If you wish.
I wish to retract that motion, make a, make a motion for three people then, is that correct?
That's right.
Excuse me, Thomas Huggins, Mr. Bledsoe, and Mr. Spurley from op. I make a motion to nominate those to the board at this time, Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Barton, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, these three persons are duly appointed to that particular board. He is a current, current...
He's the fire chief of.
Current fire chief in op.
Corey Spurley.
Corey Spurley. Mr. Joe Williams retired. And Mr. Spurley took over.
Corey Spurley from op, Sonny Bledsoe from Floella, and Mr. Huggins, Thomas Huggins from...
From Red Level.
Red Level. Excuse me, Dennis.
We did take a vote, did we not, Ms. Pitt?
All voted in favor.
Okay. The next item we have is consider approval of financing methods of the new dump trucks and tractor. And talking with Ms. Pitt last night, we have Danforth South is willing to finance at one point nine percent. I'd like to recommend to the commissioners that we have, take financing with them for the one Kenworth T eight hundred dump truck with aux body and one W nine O O two Kenworth tractor. And that would be a total of two hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. The reason I'm making that recommendation, when we sell our three, our four trucks that we got with wood auction company, that they will bring in enough money to purchase the other two trucks and bodies.
Chairman, also, note that on that, that as part of it, you have to pass a resolution stating that you don't anticipate issuing more than ten million in general obligation debt. That's a condition of it. I don't know if you want to handle that now, if you want to handle it later today.
That is, that has already been done, and it's an ongoing contract with them. But each year, we do have to comply with the, whatever that form is that you have to sign off, the IRS form, that you have not obligated more than ten million in a year. I hope they don't.
It's always been done, I need to done twice. I wasn't aware that it had been done.
Yeah, I know, you're, I think we're okay on it.
Okay, good.
With that said, and that point being made clear, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion, we adopt.
Purchase them.
That recommendation, isn't it?
Yes.
I'll second.
You have a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously.
Excuse me, I knew Mr. Turman made the motion, I missed the second. Mr. Norley, and so that I'm straight on it, we're going to finance two dump trucks and two bodies, right? And we're going, are we going to do the one truck?
We're going to finance one dump truck and body.
And the tractor trailer.
The tractor trailer.
All right.
That's a total of two hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars.
And pay cash for the other two trucks.
Uh, guaranteed sales is three hundred and nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The purchase price of those two trucks with bodies is three hundred and six thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. We've got a little change left, and I'm sure we can find a use for it.
I bet we can. I got it.
The next item is consider approval of vehicle purchases. The first one is a signed truck and a tractor with a side cutter for countywide road department. Been checking with Ms. Pitt, there's eighty thousand dollars in the budget for the purchase of, that could be used for the purchase of those two items, is that right, Mr.?
Correct.
Mr. Rawls, you got any comments on that?
I do. Darren went yesterday to the State Surplus Yard up there and looked at the, what they had in inventory. And he secured yesterday a side cutter for fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. That's a tri-tran boom cutter, but it's only good for ten days. So, we recommend that y'all accept that, so we can purchase that, that portion of that one piece of equipment. And the second is the signed truck with boom, but also for it, Kim went with, went with him yesterday to that, and they found a truck yesterday for about forty to forty-two thousand. And that's the kind of truck we're looking for. And there's a possibility, and just like with the securing this invoice for the side cutter, it's only good for about ten days. And after they looked at it, the other county who was looking to buy that truck is days are running short. So, if there's a possibility of us getting that truck, I recommend that y'all make a motion that we can get that as well for about forty, forty-two thousand.
In order to buy, Mr. Orley, you're recommending that we buy?
Yeah, this is a true signed truck. It's got the slots on the side for signs. It's got the post driver on the front, it's got a new set of tires. You know, it's a good looking, you know, it's a used truck, but it's a good truck. Looks good, and it'd be what we need, I think. And the guy that showed it to us said usually, when this comes available, they get back right then. And what he's taught, they spend four or five days waiting, and they've... And so, we have an outside chance of getting this one, and so I suggested, yeah, we...
Ms. Pitt, then we would have to fund some out of the general fund to make up the difference. Is that correct?
How much was the side cutter?
The side was fifty-three thousand nine hundred.
Now, they had two side cutters there that was available. The first one we cranked up had a skil, and the response on the boom didn't work as well. But this second one, they came out there and said, well, this one's available, and it ran better, and it just seemed like it'd be a better looking, it was a better looking piece of equipment. I'll just put it that way.
Do I have a motion that we purchase these two pieces of equipment with the funds within the budget?
Make a motion, we'll purchase this stuff we need.
Mr. Turman, make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Barton, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. The next item is a vehicle with the sheriff's department. Mr. Meeks, do you wish to address that?
Yeah, as y'all know, we lost a vehicle when Heath had his wrecked. There was, the vehicle was completely towed. There was nothing whatsoever salvageable on the vehicle. So, we're having to look at a complete vehicle equipped and everything. Estimates are around, equipped, you know, ready to go with everything, is around thirty-six.
Is what?
About, around thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand. Do I have a motion that we purchase this vehicle for the sheriff's department?
I'll second.
The insurance on it, how, they working on that?
Is this going to be a Tahoe like the rest of them, right?
I believe the vehicle, the vehicle that was wrecked was under financed, is that not correct, Ms. Pitt?
I believe it might be, and we'll, but we had full coverage on it.
So, we'll have to pay it off.
Pay it off and all that, but, yeah.
All in favor of this purchase, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is the cats, director had to purchase some tires on an emergency. In order to satisfy the alters, we did take action on that, to approve that emergency purchase. Ms. Pitt, do you have anything else?
No, you have an invoice there for Andalusia Tire. She was in a tight with her schedule and trying to get tires on and borrow more and more, couldn't get to it, so it's three hundred and sixty dollars. I'd like for y'all to approve that.
I make a motion, we approve emergency tire purchase.
Second, Chairman.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is a funding request for the Alabama Junior Rodeo Association. You've heard the request, asking us to match Andalusia's contribution... Uh, you have heard the request that, asking us to match Andalusia's contribution of fifteen hundred dollars. What's, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I'll make a motion, we match them, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
We have a motion that we provide fifteen hundred dollars to the Alabama Junior Rodeo Association. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none motion carried. Next item is Andalusia Classics.
I'll, Chairman.
May I, just a moment. Like to be able to...
I finished saying, we need, where we gonna get the, we're gonna go back to our contingency funds.
Well, I would like for y'all to approve this money to go through the rec board. That way, you're, that's, that's your agency out there to handle funding for recreation purposes. If you could just let me...
Go through the rec board?
Yeah. Get the money through, put the money through the rec board.
Yeah.
Ms. Petty brought up a good point. We do this periodic on different things, and things that could be handled through the rec board. We can make one appropriation for the budget, and then we wouldn't have to come back.
Right.
Oh, I think it was sort of streamlined stuff for us.
In the budget process for this, this next year, that would be a wonderful time saver for everybody. Everybody that wants to request money should be, you know, put out there. We'll try to send letters to people we have funded and ask them, if you want to, you know, get in the, in the mix, get it, let's get it in the budget, and then we're not constantly dealing with...
Right.
...this.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Uh, the next item is Andalusia Classics and Street, Street Rods. You know, they were asking for a thousand dollars. I, I sort of have a, a little concerned about the calendar. Uh, it's a two-year thing, but, uh, I just need to know what the commission desires. If you want to address it now, or you want to come back to it later at another meeting.
What kind of money is he, we requesting?
A thousand dollars for a two-year calendar with little coupons on it for the businesses to have a special or something like that. I know they draw quite a few people to these car shows.
They do.
Yeah, I know. I'll even go look at it.
This request, excuse me, but this request would, is, would be a little different than the last one you just had. Um, as you know, public money needs to be spent for a public purpose. I'm not saying that's not a public purpose, but if you decide to fund this in any amount, this one would probably need to go through your contingency fund. It's not tied to youth sports, it's not tied to, you know, any kind of recreation where you do have legal grounds to, to help those. This one, you can do it, you just gotta consider that it's coming out of contingency.
I want the balances and...
You got money, but...
Excuse me?
All that, how much money available in the contingency fund? You have, you're going to offhand.
We, we give some...
I would say roughly six thousand, maybe.
And we got...
Five to six thousand.
I, I'd like to recommend that we table this until the next meeting, till we can check out and see what our availability is.
I didn't know what kind of timeframe they're working on, but I'll be...
How quick do you need?
Uh, we were supposed to take everything April thirtieth to the printer, but we're gonna go ahead with the calendar. Uh, we'll make up plenty somewhere if we don't get it, but we would appreciate it. We're going to go ahead with the calendar one way or another.
What if we just down to five hundred? Well, let's just do that.
Well, I need a motion.
I, I just, I make a motion, we do a five hundred dollar.
Second.
Yeah, I was like, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. There being none motion carried unanimously. Have to report there, of course, Ms. Petty, Ms. Petty and I can determine there is no board vacancy occurring at the next month, so we'll not have to take that. Uh, this time, we'll take comments from the board. I'd like to say that I'm sorry I missed all the excitement during the flood. I happen to be in Branson, Missouri, and I got by with no bad weather up there, but, uh, oh, couple of Commissioners, everything seems to be going good. And just commend the road department for taking care of things that is needed, and I appreciate that. And, uh, I know we've got FEMA has been in here, is that right, Ms.?
No, sir. They, they come tomorrow. We're making, the guys tomorrow. They're supposed to be here Monday, they had to cancel.
It's supposed to be here the day they cancel it.
But they are, tomorrow, today.
If things don't change.
If things don't change.
I'd like to make a comment, Chairman. I'd like to ask the folks in District Three, south of Andalusia, where the most of the flood, the water has failed, and it's around Yellow River across from Biscami to Geneva County over there, some roads are pretty bad. And I just, I'd ask the folks, they're very with us, we're trying to get some money from FEMA. And it's a slow process, and it's not, nothing will happen pretty quick because they promised us Monday, now it's Thursday. And there'll probably be another Monday before they'll be here, and they may not send but one or two people. And if it does, it's gonna take a while to ride those roads and, and get the estimate and all that taken, taken up and get it in a place to, of course, the paper shows about seven hundred thousand. It might be a little more than that, but they, they have some roads in pretty bad shape down there. And I'd just like to ask the folks to be patient with us. They do the best we can do right now, what we got to work with, and we're holding off on it till we get FEMA here to look at it. And if they've wondered why, if you've got insurance on your house and you blow the top off, and you go ahead and put the top on, insurance not gonna help you very much with that. So you got to wait and let them see the damage, even though you got pictures made, that they'd love to see it themselves.
I think everyone did a good job during the, during the flood. I know that the EMA office and stuff was open all night. And, uh, they did a good job of keeping everybody posted on the weather conditions.
Any other?
I do want to say something that concerned a lot of us and a lot of people in the Sheriff's Department, everybody, was people going around barricades. Uh, we had a lot of complaints about people going around barricades, and them barricades up there for a reason. And people keep going around, and we can't send deputies down there and people all the time when somebody moves a barricade or goes around something that's, we've asked y'all to stay off of. And so it's for everybody's protection, it's not an inconvenience. And we just want people to at least observe this and, and be patient with us. Thank you.
Mr. Albritton, you have anything?
No, sir, I don't think anybody wants to hear a lawyer talk.
I might agree with you this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Rawls, you got anything else?
Uh, we had over tw, about twenty roads closed, and I think with exception, I think there's probably four or five that are still basically permanently closed. We got Booth Road, TT Clark, um, Glen Chambers, and I think maybe one other that's...
Walker Road.
Walker Road.
And Walker Road, yeah, that's, that's the four, we know they're, we got pretty significant damage on them.
You out of words this morning?
Yeah, I don't have words.
Okay. Ms. Petty, you have anything else? Where's, where my other department is? Ms. Harris, you have anything else?
Mr. Donald, and I guess, what, the community left.
I guess that, that's everybody. All in favor of adjourned, stand up.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
For adjourned.
I want the first one to stand up.